We're having our meeting tonight, Tuesday, as a result of attending the Lakes Region Technology Center's annual dinner and meeting last night. We'd like to thank Principal Bruce Farr and Assistant Principal Kathy Tadrell for their hospitality while we were there. It was an excellent dinner put on by the students in the culinary program. We saw some other excellent presentations by students in the other programs up there, so we want to extend a heartfelt appreciation to the crew up there. And we'll go ahead and start off with a pledge, if you could all stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As we kick off public participation, I just want to answer why would I be running the meeting? Our chairperson, Joel Shagnon, he fell ill, and our vice chairperson, Penny Moran, had another commitment for tonight, so it defaults to myself as the secretary. Wanted to let everybody know that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. Actually, the official day is today, but we do recognize that holiday, if you will, all week. So if you do get a chance, thank a teacher, both here and anywhere in this country. Any public participation? Okay, hearing none. We will go on to approval of minutes.
Do you want to make a motion to table the minutes since our secretary isn't here tonight?
Okay, motion to table by Ms. McElhenney. Second?
I'll second it for discussion.
We don't discuss tabling.
Well, I guess we won't discuss it then.
Are you still second?
I'll withdraw my second.
Oh, you want to second it, okay. Well, there are three of us. I will second the motion to table, seeing as the motion was made. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion passes two to one to table all minutes on the agenda for tonight for next meeting. We can move on to reports, financials.
We could start with the first portion of my report, which is on revenue. And just to let you know that we have submitted a request to the trustees of the trust funds for the reimbursement for our payment for the broadcast server, which has been installed, and all information has been converted over. So we should be receiving a check for $15,234, probably around the end of this month. I don't have any, really anything else to really report on revenue, unless there's any questions. If you could just move along to some of my notes concerning the general fund. At this point, we have quite a number of things that we still do need to encumber in expenses that we know are going to be occurring at this time of the year. And they're the typical expenses. But one of the things I just want to bring to your attention is that under function 2620, under electricity, as I've done some projections, I do see that with the volatility, with natural disasters, so to speak, the cost of electricity has hit us somewhat. And so I'm looking at having to cover probably about another $10,000 in terms of all of those lines in aggregate. You know, it's not, it's not an issue, but it's just something that's, you know, on the radar. Also, we do have nearly, between all departments, including facilities, technology, busing, and instructional, we are probably going to see about expenditures in the vicinity of about $40,000 for supplies, consumables, and even as we're gearing up for, for summer school. Also, consumable purchases are also in that group as well, about another $4,000. Let's see. Also, in function 2620, we've been talking with our facilities director, and there are some projects that he is, he has been working on and has been lining up to be working on.
Waiting for warm weather.
Right. And basically, it becomes a chain reaction, so to speak. But there is probably purchases, a combination of whether it's a service for, you know, line striping or sweeping, repairs, supplies. So in, in his budget, probably about another $110,000 on all of those types of materials. Let's see, under technology, under function 2820, we also are expecting to, this is about the time of year that we're seeing all the renewals, whether it's for the Barracuda backups, other software programs. And one of the things that we are exploring is, really, I think I have Superintendent Vaughn's support on this, is that starting next year, we could have our free and reduced lunch applications online, so that parents have a choice, whether they go onto the computer and they fill it out, or they can provide the paper copy. I think that it will also help streamline some of the, just handling the paper. Also, the timeliness, as soon as a parent puts the information in, they're going to get an automatic response that they qualify or not qualify. That puts the district in also a better position in terms of claiming. And cost-wise, it really isn't that expensive. It's a $900 one-time fee, and then you purchase your applications in bundles. So I think our initial investment will probably be about $1,400, $1,500. So I think it's very well-
Well worth it.
Well worth, well worth it, yes. Let's see. One other piece I just want to bring to your attention is that you'll see some negative variances concerning cell phones. We have met with Verizon and have gone over some of the new types of government plans. And what we've done is we've entered into an agreement with them. It's, it's called a NASPO plan, and I, forgive me, I don't recall the acronym for it, the definition of the acronym. But essentially, we will save some money, probably about 750 a year. But what we're looking at also is, is downgrading some of those phones in that they just really need to be a flip phone in terms of emergency needs. So we're in that process of doing that. And we really have not purchased or replaced phones for a while. So the new account, the new contract does afford us the opportunity to, okay, replacing the phones now.
Refresh some things that are duct taped together.
And just last, in summary, I've indicated where there are some, some significant savings in this year's budget that we don't expend, expect to expend. And that would be in the area of vocational tuition, the community education, of course, the school resource officer, speech OT, library media. So right there, immediately, that's 112,000 in savings that we're not expecting to spend. I guess I'll entertain questions if there's specific lines.
Those are the years you're looking for.
Yeah. I think the other thing to throw in here, we have gotten word on possible additional funding being added to the securities grant that we had come up just shy on the, yes, we'll fund you. There's about a $10 million-
$10 million, yeah.
Amount that's being put forward as a possible just for the securities pieces now. So they would look at funding what they didn't fund, and then perhaps funding new pieces that are requested. For us, I'm really hoping that that goes through on this side of July 1. Right now, I have matching funds for that piece. If it happens on the other side of July 1, our matching funds are going to be a lot harder to come by. So we'll have to see where that goes, but that's a possibility. So that would be part of what I would be looking to kind of hold as a, please, please, please.
I just have a quick question. On page 24, for the snow removal, we're in a deficit of $13,016. Does that include salt and sand, too, or is that just snow removal?
Yes, it does. It does.
Okay, that's one thing I was-
And salt went up significantly this year.
Yeah, I figured it did. And then the only other question I had, custodian linens on page 26, what does that entail?
So that is for mops. And basically, for sanitation purposes, they're always having to change them out.
Gotcha.
Rotational.
Thank you, Ms. McElhenney. Mr. Frida, any questions?
Nope, I'm fine.
Okay. I do have a couple. For the additional quantities that you said would need to be encumbered under 2620 accounts, are those already showing in the encumbrances column?
No, they're not.
Or they're still to be done?
They're not.
Likewise, the $900 for, is it the I-4C program?
No, I-4C is, is our, part of our state reporting program for our-
That's different than free and reduced, okay. That's different, one and the same. That will show up under technology, though, right? Where it would be in a new software-
Yes.
That will help with our administrative needs?
Yeah, it's under the object 56500.
Thank you.
We have several thousand that's in there right now, but I'm expecting some other expenses as well, so.
And then, it sounds like you're very early in the cellphone contract renegotiation or new contract negotiation phase, so that would come to us just as any other multi-year contract.
Actually, we've already, it includes non-appropriation. So this is, this is a government program offered to the municipalities, counties, you know, not out in the private sector. So actually, it's a, pretty much a done-
And it's, our contract with Verizon wasn't up. We've just kind of renegotiated for what we have left. So it's not just a-
Yeah, it would take us out, I believe, to June 2019.
Which is where we, about where we would have been anyway, paying more on an older contract.
Okay, so this does result in less money than the existing contract that's already-
Yes, it does.
Excellent.
Just we discovered that we were in a not-so-great, so we're fixing it.
Scrubbing.
Scrubbing. Yes. Where can we find some more nickels?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. A minor change to the agenda with the board's concurrence under reports. If we could get some recognitions announced for our curriculum department and our student services department?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, so to let you know, Mrs. Lefebvre is not here this evening, but I did want to let everyone know that she had presented at the NERO Annual Conference. NERO stands for New England Educational Research Organization. And she is a doctoral candidate at UNH and has been working on a number of different pieces. Her specialty is competency education. And so the title of the paper that they presented was "Investigating the Implementation of K-12 Competency-Based Education in the Northeast States." And so she presented with a team, and they were part of a symposium panel for their presentation, I believe it was last Friday. And so, you know, she's doing us proud, and we're, we're very excited about the work that she's doing and the expertise that she's bringing to the district.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Mrs. Lefebvre.
And then you have our student services director's report in your packets. And if there are any specific questions from Mrs. Tenato, you can ask her at the next board meeting. She's also been excused for this evening. But I did want to let everyone know that we've received two compliance status reports, one for indicator 12, early transitions, and one for indicator 11, timeliness of initial evaluations for the 2017-18 reporting year. And the early transitions were for '16 and '17. And for both indicators for the district, we have received a rating of 100% compliance. So and actually, for the timeliness of indicator 11, we also had the previous three years were also 100% compliance.
Wow.
So those are amazing, amazing marks there, and it's a credit to the entire special ed department because that is not the work of one person by any stretch. It takes an incredible team to be able to do that and get things done on time. So thank you so much.
Yes.
Just so everyone at home knows, Ms. Vaughn is thanking both our, one of our case managers, Ms. Bashan, and one of our parent educators, Mrs. Pate. And so both of them are in roles that are absolutely critical to that sort of performance. So thank you.
Those results are fantastic. Okay, that's it for reports. Next on our agenda, we have new business. There is field trip approval to Sanford, Maine.
Yes. Last year, our fifth grade took a trip to Sanford, Maine's wastewater facility as part of their ecology week, and they are requesting to repeat that field trip. One of our teachers has a spouse who works there and kind of gives the kids the VIP treatment, takes them through. But because this is across the state line, I need board approval for the field trip. So I'm asking for motion for that.
I'll move to allow the children to go to Sanford, Maine to see the wastewater facility.
Okay, motion by Mr. Frida, second by Ms. McElhenney. Any discussion?
Nothing outside of normal field trip questions, but costs and so on.
This is the same trip that they've done. I think the total cost is for the busing itself, which is, is shared out. There's no admission charge for the students to get in. And so, yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you. Just making sure that going out of state doesn't incur-
Right.
Costs that families can't-
No.
-absorb or we can't use-
And you can get to Sanford from here without incurring a toll, so.
Even that, great, thank you. Okay, any other discussion or questions?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, three to zero.
Thank you.
Would you like to talk about the top 10 dinner next?
This is just by way of announcement to the board. The top 10 dinner will be on June 6 at 6 o'clock. So it's 6:00, 6:00 at 6. If you have a hard time remember-
Six, six, six.
Yes. That was when they had it available, and so it's just easy mnemonics. And it will, you will be given kind of a, a choice from which to, it won't be complete menu, but you'll have your options when you get there. So it's at Granite Steak. And so if you could RSVP to me, and then I will get numbers to Dr. Moore.
Thank you. This is our invitation?
This is for the top 10, yes. This is, this is your official invitation. I believe there's one coming in writing, but this is your notification, save the date.
Thank you. Wonderful. Can't wait to recognize the top 10. That's of the graduating class of 2018 Farmington High School. Wonderful, thank you very much. Okay, we can move on to policies. First on our list, we have a job description update for our business administrator position.
Yes. And so included in the folder for this is a couple of things. One is the job description itself. One is the, a fairly long memo from the New Hampshire retirement, state retirement system. We've been given notice that the business administrator's position needs to be withheld at the higher teacher rate if the school district requires-
Just looking at my audience view.
If the school district requires that person to hold a New Hampshire certificate. If the school district does not require us to have our business administrator hold that certificate, then that can be withheld at the lower employee rate. We do have a change for next year as well. I'll make my way of announcement. They've also made the same determination for curriculum director. Even though neither of these positions are necessarily student-facing, they're saying that because curriculum director is required to hold certification, they must be withheld at the higher teacher rate. So we will need to withhold more that isn't currently budgeted for retirement for Mrs. Lefebvre's position and also for our business administrator, if, as we review our job description, if we include must hold New Hampshire certification the way it reads now. If we choose to amend that and say New Hampshire certification preferred, but not required, then it doesn't have to be held at the low, at the higher rate, even if the person we hire holds a certificate, because we're not saying they have to. So the difference for the business administrator's position next year will be $5,026.07. So something to keep in mind as you look at the job description that's proposed. The job description there hasn't been updated for quite some time, and so this is pretty much a, a complete redo of where things were and kind of revamping things. The only addition that the policy committee did not see that I had was the NASBO Code of Ethics and Conduct that I did add under other, I believe, down at the very end, is number one, to abide by that as well, as that is part of the larger piece for membership across the state.
Right. Is there a motion to accept this job description?
I'll move to accept as a final read.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Frida to accept as a final read.
Aye.
Second by Ms. McElhenney. Questions or discussion?
Currently, this does have as suggested rather than required. Depending upon if the board feels strongly about changing that back to required, it's certainly doable. There are financial implications.
So right now, what is budgeted for next school year is this format, the, this version, this updates what that would result in in terms of the New Hampshire retirement system payments?
How would this, I, well, I feel that if we leave it as it is, we would perhaps get a larger pool to draw from.
You mean this update? If we were, accept this update?
Yes. It's possible.
Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, you're good.
Ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to accept this proposed job description for business administrator as a final read, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, none, and it passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice work on this.
And I am almost finished with the brochure, so that would be-
Oh, sweet.
We did have a sample brochure, too, that we had seen from another district that looked lovely when they advertised for the position. And so I'm trying to now put this, now that it's been approved, into that format to go forth and-
Oh, that's great.
And show off a bit. So we'll see how that goes.
Be a template for posting for all positions.
I would love to use that as a template for posting for all. It may be a bit of a shoehorn to get it into Ed jobs, but we can at least do it on our side.
Okay, moving on with policies. Next on our list, we have policy IK, which is earning of credit. It's in a folder called graduation and competency policies?
Yes. And there are some other policies that will be, I've put into a folder that will end up being brought forward next time, that are somewhat interwoven. And as I was going through, okay, I can't get everything done now.
Yes.
But it will be there. So the first page that was also included there gives the requirements for three-area schools, what our standard diploma would be, and what our requirements are now for comparison. Now that we've-
I think what you're looking at is IKF.
Okay, well, no, this wasn't part of a policy. This was a separate-
It's this one here, I think?
It's that, yes.
Okay.
The document called graduation requirements.
Yes, okay. And so that gives a little bit of a, a comparison across. The increase in the requirements, now that we have moved to block scheduling, we have more credits. It's now looking to see, to give the students opportunities and requirements that now you can't just get away with 20 credits if the opportunity is to take 32. Looking at the comparison with the other schools that also have similar, the difference between their 26 credits required and our 28 is that we give a half credit per year for real-time or that advisory block. So students receive two credits over the four years just for attending that. Those blocks are not for credit in the other schools. So that's the difference there. It doesn't mean that there's more time that's taken away from something else. It's just, I don't want to say they get credit just for showing up. There's more to it than that, but have to kind of work to fail advisory, so.
Okay, well, if there's a motion on any of these first three, first two policies that are listed here, IK or IKF, or maybe both together, then we can start discussion on the details.
Yep. I'll move that we accept policy IK and IKF as a final read.
As a final read.
I will second for discussion.
Okay, thank you. So just so that those following along know what we're looking at. So with Farmington High School going to the four-by-four block schedule, we're taking a look at the actual credit requirements broken down by subject matter, so that having the opportunity to take more courses on a semester workload in a four-by-four block schedule, it would shift Farmington High School's current school year requirements from 21 and a half requirements over the four years to graduate to 28 credits over the next four years to graduate by the year 2022.
And it is, it is a rolling increase. So it doesn't just go to 28 credits next year for juniors who've been under the current system. It would still be 21 and a half credits for them. For the class of 2020, it would be 26. For the class of 2021, it would be 27 credits. And for the class of 2022, it would be 28 credits. So it gives them an opportunity to roll into it. This year, they really only had the opportunity to have five full credits besides the real-time advisory. Next year, and the years thereafter, they have the opportunity for eight credits plus advisory. So eight and a half.
Let you each have the opportunity to ask questions first?
Actually, you answered a bunch of them. I did notice the rollout. I just wanted to make sure that is the case, that's why it's broken out like that.
Absolutely, yes.
And now, these numbers here are just for the standard diploma, for the graduation with distinction and things like that. That would be-
Over and above, yes.
Over and above.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's in IKF.
Oh, all right.
So if you look at the second minimum requirements for graduation for the FHS diploma, that's the 28 credits. If you look at the next page, diploma with distinction and New Hampshire scholars, it ends up that you'd have, and again, there's a, an incremental piece to that as well. Class of 2020 would need nine elective credits. Class of 2021, 10 elective credits. So that rolls up to- Class of 2021, 10 elective credits, so that rolls up to. And the pieces that are in the subsequent, all the underlying bits of this are new to our policy. They are boilerplate from New Hampshire School Board's policy. So, pieces that we need to have saying that early graduation is something we do. We do have an early graduation policy, but it also needs to be part of this piece. Awarding of credit, how is it awarded? And this is where ILBAA and policy IMBC are cross-referenced, and those will be brought forward at the next meeting.
Should we accept these if the counterparts are not at final read? I know we held off previously on policies that referenced other material.
Well, the current policy is 5123.1. Is it, are those referencing ILBAA or IOVC at all?
No, they are not. All of the underlined pieces on the third page are new to this policy.
So, you did have a policy previously, correct?
We did, we did. It was, yeah, policy 5123.1, which was, I think, adopted a while ago. It was slightly amended last year. But it was never reformatted to the new policy format. It was just kind of patched, knowing that there were other pieces coming.
Again, policy committee, great job. This looks like a lot of work.
Thank you, this is extensive work by Dr. Moore.
Yes, definitely.
Ms. Vaughn, together, left, back and forth, from your teams. Can you talk to us about the rollout plan to students, to parents?
And part of what we would like to do with this, while course sign-ups have been happening, we've talked in generalities to students about this. Basically, don't worry, yes, there will be a change. No, it's not going to sink you, we promise. But we don't have, we haven't had this to put in program of studies to get to students and their parents. I would really like to at least get this piece out, which speaks more directly to what we need to do to solidify that schedule for next year. And then, the other referenced policies are really more in regard to alternative credit, which we have one sort of, but it's not titled exactly that. And high school competency assessments, while we do have a competency policy, it's not labeled as that. So, they need to be embedded under the current labeling system. We have pieces, I just need to make them talk to one another now.
Do you think it would be helpful to accept this as a first read? And then, at next meeting, when all the policies are ready, then.
That would put us another two weeks before we can announce to students. At this point, I mean, scheduling will move forward anyway. There are some that I know are looking for this, but another two weeks to make it solid is probably not going to hamstring us.
I don't personally think that. The additional policies that need to connect are all that important in terms of stopping the school year. We could easily get those to the board next time, I think. Within two weeks, and this can already be in the works for printers and things like that. I think that's important, since it is May.
We do need to get.
Program of studies should be out.
Program of studies is out, but as we look at getting handbooks printed, those sorts of things, this needs to go in the handbook. And the handbook is in rough draft awaiting this.
And the other components that aren't part of this, aren't part of the handbook?
They don't have to be. This has to be, the others could be referenced and available.
Considering the time constraint, I'm okay with accepting them tonight as a final read, this portion then.
Yeah, I think that's wise.
Okay, great. So, the motion now is to approve for a final read both policies IK, earning of credit, and IKF, graduation requirements.
That's correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, 3-0, motion passes. Next policy on the list is EDC, employ use of cell phones. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to accept this as a final read.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Ms. McElhenney, second by Mr. Frida, to accept as a final read. It shows here that the change from the current existing policy has a strikeout of the line. Provisions may also be included for staff to use, staff use of privately owned cellular phones and other devices for authorized district business.
That.
That was the only change.
That's the only change. And that has been stricken so that we're not looking to have district employees using their own cell phones for district business and being reimbursed for that. We feel it's better to keep it separate so that in the event that something is subpoenaed, this is district information and someone's own private cellphone isn't commandeered, so.
Sounds good. Sounds like a good move to protect our employees. And also, ties back into what Merz Berghoel was talking about for the flip phone alternative to district-issued cell phones. Great. Any questions or concerns, discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Again, unanimous 3-0, motion passes. Thank you. Next are policy EEAEA, mandatory drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers. And then, there's the related procedure, drug and alcohol testing for school bus and commercial vehicle drivers.
And that is drivers, not divers.
Thank you.
We're not anticipating flooding at this point.
Yeah.
Since they are related, I will make a motion to, for a final read for both EEAEA, mandatory drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers, and EEAEAR.
Okay. Motion to accept for a final read, both policy and procedure, by Ms. McElhenney.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Frida, thank you. Questions, discussion?
I just wanted to know, what are some of the, is this a new policy? Or what, if not, what changes are there from the former one?
We had had a cursory policy regarding this. Or, yeah. This is pretty much.
Required by law, actually.
It's required by law, and this gives the complete update of what's needed for legal references, which what we had were kind of slim.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, this, the wording is straight from New Hampshire School Boards. Basically, we, I think what we had had was just we can and will test, but that was about it. This gives a little bit more information about that than the RSA that supports RSA is multiple bits more than.
All right, any other questions?
Just one. For a school bus driver to take the test, would they be required to pay for it? Or is that something that the school funds?
The drug and alcohol testing?
Yes, we do. We do have that budgeted, yes.
And those are done randomly? And pretty much, we'll get a phone call and it'll be, you're going now. And they go, so.
Okay, any other questions concerned? I have one, our bus hang coordinator and supervisor, Mrs. Tellis. She's reviewed all of this language and nothing is of.
This is not going to be any kind of a surprise to her at all. There's nothing blindsided here. In fact, these types of policies are also part of their in-service type of training as refreshers, so.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, so, ready to vote? All in favor, motion to go for a final read?
Aye.
Opposed, none, all right, unanimous 3-0, motion passes. And that is it for policies. Is there any other new business? Okay, we'll move on to old business. Any old business? Okay, anything else at all, other, before we go into public participation in the non-public session?
Nope, I think we're all set.
Thank you again to the teachers.
Yes. I do want, wanted to mention one announcement. The FHS curriculum fair is going on right now. We were able to pop in individually to check out some of the displays and the projects.
I saw it get closed 10 minutes ago.
Ah, thank you.
Please don't watch out.
But it is there tomorrow.
Tomorrow, from 3:30 to 7:00.
The students had really great poster presentations and things, so come on down and see it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, we will go ahead and see, is there any public participation again? Okay, hearing done, entertain a motion to go to.
We want to announce our next meeting?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Our next meeting is Monday, May 21st, 6:30 PM, Farmington High School. That's it for public session.
Okay, yeah, 21st, perfect.
So, thank you for everyone who tuned in to the Farmington School Board meeting, everyone who came, appreciate it. And entertain a motion to go into non-public session. One for RSA 91832, CJ for student issue.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. McElhenney, second by Mr. Frida. All in favor, by rule?
Aye.
All opposed, none, passes unanimously, 3-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you.